All right, welcome to the Burlington Select Board Open Meeting. Today is Monday, January twenty-seventh. It's getting lighter later out, so that's a good thing. As a reminder, open session, public meetings are being recorded. Your image and voice forever and ever on the YouTube. All right, call to order six thirty-one. First up, approval of minutes. We don't have any. Ready for this session, we will double up February tenth. Yep, general public comment? Okay, nope. You gotta pay attention here quick.
A little fast.
We move. All right, hearings and appointments, we don't have any. Kristen, you're up.
Okay, so, sorry. You moved so fast, I...
Well, gotta be prepared for these things.
Ready. All right, so the town accountant has completed her review of all of the FY twenty-six budget submittals. I am in the process of meeting with departments, boards, and committees to discuss their requests prior to their meetings with FinCom. And I have drafted a very preliminary budget that includes a number of assumptions on the revenue side. But it does currently include the full request submitted by departments, boards, and committees to discuss later on in this meeting with you all and Wednesday with the FinCom. As you all know, FinCom meetings have resumed seven thirty on Wednesdays. You can find out which budgets are being discussed through My Town Government on their agendas. And the Capital Planning Committee has completed their review of all submitted requests. They will meet again on February twenty-seventh at seven P M. to finalize recommendations. And again, more information available at MyTownGov. And just a reminder, the twenty-twenty-four Annual Town Reports are due to TownReports@TownOfBurland.com by January thirty-first, which is Friday. I have an update from the new Council on Aging Director. She, believe it or not, has been here for two months. She's hit the ground running, been out meeting with residents and community stakeholders. And I wanted to just share with the board some of the events that she has planned and activities after these initial discussions and in coordination with other groups. The dates and everything are in the packet. You can get more information, I believe, in the Powderhouse News. We have this in there as well. But there's going to be Integrity Medicare Advisors on the second Monday of every month, a Veterans Breakfast on the second Thursday of every month, a Meet the Director on the nineteenth of February at one. There's going to be, it says Worcester Registry of Deeds. I don't know exactly what that one's about, but I will find out. She's in the process of scheduling a meeting with the Director down at Northbrook that's going to happen in March, looking at a summer barbecue on the eighteenth of June. And she's doing a coffee hour at Nineteen Carter every Wednesday from ten to eleven A M. Also looking into a number of other potential events. And as we talked about all along, the key is really coordinating, not duplicating efforts and determining what types of events residents would really like to attend, working with what is already out there and available where we can partner up as opposed to duplicate. I decided to create a new section for the report called Burlington Town Center Improvements because there are another, a number of interconnected projects that are happening right around the center. The first is the Complete Streets Project. And what I'll do is I'll just update this section for every meeting, so everyone's kind of on the same page of how these projects are in coordination and working together with one another. We are in the process of doing the surveying. And I have a call this week with the consultant firm who was doing the design for Complete Streets. As you may be aware, or we've discussed, that they had an initial stakeholders meeting and conceptual design plans are being, will be worked on, and a public meeting will be held to discuss the designs and get input. We have been working with the Historical Commission on drainage and the driveway project at eighteen-seventy Town Hall and Bullard, looking at kind of that campus, if you will, as a comprehensive site to address drainage and stormwater runoff that impacts both of those properties using ARPA funding. Once designed, we will have to seek funding for implementation of the drainage, likely from the Capital Planning Committee. I imagine that would be as part of the FY twenty-seven funding round. We may have a bit of ARPA money left over, but that project had fifty-five thousand allocated to it. And unfortunately, given the complexities of the size of the site and impervious surfaces and the fact that stormwater regulations have gotten increasingly complex since two thousand sixteen, it is about twenty-five thousand dollars just to update the plans and to come up with a new stormwater management plan because it involves structures as opposed to doing things like rain gardens or some other more simplified things that you can do when you have more land available. Also, as you know, the Select Board voted to take over the application for the front stair replacement project at eighteen-seventy, and that's currently with the CPA Committee for Review and would go to town meeting in May if, for final approval, if approved by the CPA Committee. Then, once designed, additional funding would be sought from the CPA Committee to construct the staircase. And then lastly, we put some ARPA funding forward for interior painting, staircase carpet runner, and other minor interior repairs at the eighteen-seventy Town Hall that I'm currently working on with the eighteen-seventy Town Hall Manager. Wanted to give you an update on the Public Safety Upstairs Reno Project with ASABIT. If you've seen the staircase and scaffolding that is done, and the door into the building has been installed. We have received approval from D E P, or Department of Environmental Protection, regarding the public water and sewer system impacts, because we do have that for this building. We had to have their sign off, which we've received. And the rest of the departments are currently reviewing the building permit that's been submitted. Preliminary preparations inside of the building have begun under the review and permission of the building inspector. And unfortunately, we've learned that the HVAC system is designed, is too complex for the school to undertake. So we are working with the architect on a potential alternate design. Otherwise, if we have to put the system out as is, it's about a three to four hundred thousand dollar system to implement, which would eat up more than half of what we have available for the project as a whole. So that is, stay tuned. Working, we are working to see what we can do there. Under Personnel, I did meet with the Police Chief for preliminary discussions regarding contract renewal. I will be having a similar conversation with the Fire Chief as all three of our contracts expired June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-five. I'll be bringing up those proposals forward to the board at upcoming executive sessions. We also, I had an interesting conversation with the Shared Services Team at Central Mass Regional Planning Commission regarding trying to get some assistance with planning and economic development. I would like to put a supplemental funding request in the FY twenty-six budget for assistance with all of the projects we have going on, ARPA, CPA, and looking at development of a long-term economic development strategy for the town as we've kind of stagnated on the development side. And I think it's very important to do things carefully and cautiously, but also look to the future so that we're not constantly hitting taxpayers for, you know, the impacts of growing needs on public safety and the school side. So I think that's something that could be potentially beneficial, and we could partner with other towns to do this and have a fractional or part-time position that I think would be quite helpful. I did have a brief conversation with Tim Wheeler and Carolyn on the Planning Board, and they recommended calling it a project coordinator as opposed to a town planner, so it doesn't look like it's somebody who's kind of like taking over the duties of the Planning Board, which certainly is not the intent. They would work with the Economic Development Committee and the Planning Board. I just want to get this on people's radar. I understand this may not be the year to fund it, like everything else that is going on, but I do see that as really the next needed staffing position for the town. And I've seen it since about two months in, but put it off because of other needs with public safety and the schools. Good news, the consultant has completed their reconciliation of FY twenty-four, and the Town Accountant and Treasurer are making all of the adjustments on our end so we can get the Schedule A to the state and get free cash certified for FY twenty-four. I also met with members of Conservation to discuss procurement of their proposed CPA project, which involves a parking and meadow viewing area off of Lyman Street with linking into trails. And we're looking at potentially new uses of the electricity aggregation adder funds because the Department of Public Utilities has come out with some new guidance, and we will be having a further conversation, Tim and I, and the Energy Committee about this going forward, because this is sort of hot off the presses and Colonial Power has recently sent us this information. We are sitting on still a large sum of money that's, I believe, somewhere between eighty and a hundred thousand dollars in adder funds. And also, I was invited to attend the four ninety-five Metro West Partnership Planning and Economic Development Working Group, which is quite a name, where they discuss funding and regional projects. So that was a really interesting thing to attend, given the fact that we, you know, don't have, we might be able to look at future partnerships with other, you know, towns, cities, and towns in the region. So it's a rather long one, but that's what I have for you.
Questions?
No, my stuff will be at the end.
All right, I have just two quick ones. And it could just be a typo thing. On the Council of Aging, she said Northbrook Village one or two. Is it one and two? Because there are two different management groups that own the front half and the back.
She's trying to figure out the, can it be coordinated between the two, or do they have to have two meetings? So I think that should be like an and/or?
Yeah, all right. And then the second one, under ConCom and their parking area and View Vista on Lyman. I thought that was part of the whole SVT or whatever grant that they got that that was included in it to have the current somewhat driveway of the former residence of that area turned into a parking area. And then there was talk about a walkabout trail on the corner of Lyman and Linden. So was that not part of the original why we're buying the whole Pisgah thing?
I am not familiar with the original part. I could certainly talk to Carolyn. My understanding is they were trying to have Highway do the labor and purchase the materials and pay overtime to Highway through CPA. But CPA funds cannot be used to hire municipal employees, as they found out. I don't know anything about SVTs involved in it. I just know that it was for the parking area and what Carolyn called a meadow viewing area with benches. And then it would be like at the trail head or at the beginning of the trails over there. So I can definitely find out.
Yeah, just check, because I honestly thought that the original request was to have an ADA walkabout trail on that corner where people could park and just kind of whiz around the meadow. But I know that it's changed from where they want the parking. It's kind of like over the ledge and beyond that that's where they want the seating area, so then you can take off into the woods.
I know they talked about the materials for the walk-around area being ADA compliant. But did you think SVT was involved?
I didn't, I mean, SVT was involved. We got a grant. I think we paid off SVT.
I think that was for the purchase of Horseshoe Pond. Was that, are you thinking of the...
Horseshoe Pond is Pisgah.
Okay, let me find out. I'll do, I'll give Carolyn a call.
Inside Pisgah.
Inside, okay.
Okay, all right.
I got some more info on that.
Cool, yeah. All right, so we're gonna wiggle and jiggle a little bit so Mr. Energy Man can come on down to the front and not have to stay the entire evening. That would be you. Well, because...
Oh, elections, not her. You're just naturally known as the energy man.
Oh, that's right. I called you Energy Man. You're, you're Voting Man.
Take off one hat.
All right, you're Voting Man, okay.
Scaring me, Peg.
Well, I scare a lot of people, Tim. That should be of no surprise to you. So no, I wanted to bring you up while we're gonna talk about the discussion regarding the voting equipment, which you talked to us last week meeting ago.
So I did some research, and it depends on, this is this obligation of funding with ARPA that they've put in place. And I believe it is from a political standpoint that they wanted to have the funding obligated so that it couldn't potentially be clawed back. Unless that funding is, can be considered a cost that was incurred or obligated under some type of contract proposal or agreement prior to December thirty-first, we can't use ARPA funding for it. However, there are other potential funding sources. You know, I don't know if it may meet the definition for a reserve fund transfer, if it's a safety hazard, or if we could look at an article for town meeting.
Well, I think the...
Need a safety hazard to be a reserve fund transfer?
Or an unanticipated expense. Do you know what I mean? Like it would be a, it doesn't have to be a safety hazard. I was just thinking because you...
I was gonna say, I don't remember that ever being considered, or we've done them for any of my years on FinCom or Select Board.
No, 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 I'm sorry. I didn't make that clear. I meant in order to get it before town meeting, to be able to use it for like the next town elections, if your concern is that, you know, there's a safety factor involved in it, and therefore, you know, you needed it before bringing it to town meeting, that FinCom may consider a reserve fund transfer?
Can I ask that the spreadsheet I still have in front of me shows there's four thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars left in ARPA funds for voting machines, polling pads, and election-related stuff. And I thought the amount we're talking about was like twelve hundred dollars.
Well, the Pole Master ADA booth is three forty-four fifty, and the ADA booth is seven hundred. So let's all do peg math. That's what, eleven? Almost eleven? Oh, that's for two booths. Two ADA booths are seven hundred, and the Pole Master ADA booth is three forty-five. Were those the only two costs? Three costs? Oh, and the bins.
So originally, the proposal had two ADA booths of whatever stripe we chose as a stopgap for improving overall ADA accessibility in voting. Then there was a second proposal for bins, which were, they're like nine dollars a piece times twelve, so it was, you know, a couple hundred bucks. And then there was a larger proposal for forty bin, forty voting booths at, I think there were like one seventy-eight please. So that was how it was kind of broken down in the original presentation. As far as timing and ARPA funds and all that, I was actually a little bit surprised that you were willing to move on that at the last meeting. So there wasn't any expectation from me nor Beth, I believe, that it would be ready for the next upcoming election. It would be nice, but we've managed just fine so far. It's just something that we would like to put on your radar, is something we would like to do. So I, I mean, I completely understand the obligation requirements under, under ARPA. I do, you know, I could see where Scott's going to with the, the extra funds. I don't know if that's specific to that thing, whether that can be transferred. But I guess the, what I'm trying to say in a long form here is, if we need to go to town meeting, I'll be happy to speak to the need at town meeting floor.
Yeah, so doing, doing peg math, two ADA booths equalling seven hundred, one Pole Master ADA booth, three forty-eight-ish. One, fourteen, one gallon, fourteen, four, total fourteen of the storage bins at nine dollars each brings us to a hundred and twenty-six. So if you add up everything, I've got eleven seventy-four. And how much did you save as in ARPA?
So it looks like it, in early, early December, we moved it out of that lineup and into Project Twenty-three.
I think you're adding an additional bin, or additional booth. There was, the initial request was two...
ADA booths.
ADA booths. I think I gave you two different flavors.
Oh, so the Pole Master, one ADA booth is...
That was the examples. So I think that you can take approximately three hundred and fifty dollars off of that.
Yep, so that makes it even better.
So we're talking, Tim math, about a thousand dollars.
You know, I'm close. I always say-ish, yeah.
Right. For a thousand dollars, I don't want us to go to the floor of town meeting.
Right.
Long-term, you want to look at raising the cost.
I mean, I think floor town meeting is, is replacing the, the, the booths themselves and...
Yeah, the four, the forty of them.
Right.
That is, you know, forty-five hundred dollars, that might be. But the ADA and the bins, I mean, the bins themselves are less, you know.
I'm just trying to think of another place.
If I were to prioritize the needs, the ADA is important for accessibility and safety. The bins are important for document retention, general organization, and, you know, maintaining auditability and all that. And then the tertiary need would be the replacement of all the existing voting booths.
So if we have money, and it's under a grand-ish.
Right. I would just spend it out of election supplies, make election expenses, which is a line item in the budget. And if that lineup happens to go over what is there, we ask for a reserve fund transfer.
I'm fine with that. Do you want to motion?
That makes sense tonight.
I will make that motion. If we approve spending this, we use the, the election expenses lineup to go to two and that we will support a reserve fund transfer if that lineup by the end of the year happens to be over. It's a lot.
I will second. Any other discussion? Nope. Vote?
Aye.
And aye.
I think we should make sure, probably not for May, but probably for, if there's a fall town meeting, to put money together so that potentially we can have the booths ready for the next sort of big-ish election. I'm sure that there's something this fall, but I mean, by fall of next year.
This is a, a good time to be discussing this, because next year, the only election that I'm aware of is the town election. This is kind of our bye year, so to speak. It's the year that's following when you start getting back into the primaries and the generals for the mid-year, or the midterm elections. Thank you.
Thank you. Voting Energy Man. All right.
Elections, the elections are energy, should ease.
Could call him Tim Eeee, but then, you are a double E. Nope, 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 nope. We will strike that out of this recording. All right. Well, hello, Mr. Smith. All right, so up to old business. Let's talk about the Highway Barn. I know that that's the next one we wanted to tackle.
Yep.
After our meeting last week, or two weeks ago. I had asked Fred, what exactly is in the old Highway Barn? Because as we find out, we think buildings are empty and they're not, so...
We spent four-plus million on a new Highway Barn, so Highway would have to store anything but in the new barn and not store anything anywhere else in town. And every time we look at a building, Highway has something stored in it.
Surprise! So yes, so for those watching and those here, what's currently in the Highway, Old Highway Barn? COA van, crack seal machine, pavement roller on trailer, wood for the transfer station project, fabric roll for the transfer station project, portable water tank, backhoe bucket, concrete basin blocks, two lawn mowers, pipeline generator, wood for conservation fence, and leftover vinyl siding. I don't know how much that equates to in footage, but I'm thinking the van is a giant chunk and the trailer.
We have to own less things as a town.
I know. Well, unfortunately, I mean, this is gonna be Highway's decision as to what is legit and what, what is not.
Finally, they're making recommendations on, they're allowed to store things in their new Highway Barn. Anything else that doesn't store there has to go away.
So maybe whenever Fred is coming next, we bring this up and have a discussion with him?
Yeah, Kristen, if you could, because, I, we looked over the, the twenty-twenty-three recommendations for the building, and although it doesn't need huge amounts of stuff, the building is also not in great shape. It's a thirty-year-old roof and other stuff, and I think I'm gonna continue like that building should come down.
Old Highway?
Old Highway should come down.
No bathroom.
It has no water.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
It has no water or septic anymore, and so...
That's right.
You're limited to what you'd ever be able to do with it. And maybe it could be used for storage, but tearing it down and building something designed for storage will be a better, more efficient use for the town. And so, and then I'm wondering, there were a lot of vehicles parked on that property. Are we getting rent for the business that is using it to park their vehicles? Do we have a lease agreement?
No, that space, which I think you're thinking of to the right of the driveway, that is private-owned land, which...
In front and behind the building?
Yeah, I think you'd have to look at, at who owns that. It's, there's some town property, and then it's private property, which I think a lot of those cars are parked on down the side. But that's one thing to look at.
When I was there, there was very little room around the building that did not have a car on it.
I know.
And so unless the land is only the building and nothing more...
Would you like me to have, I can have PD confirm where, you know, what's down there and what shouldn't, shouldn't be there?
Because the, now, the summary could be wrong, because the town summary I read said it was a building and space for up to thirty parking, parking spots, which I thought was generous, because I couldn't figure out whether to get thirty parking spots, even if we tore down the building, so... But for, for me, I think the, I, when this started in twenty-three, I thought that building would be one of the great ones we could sell and get some revenue out of. The fact that it has no water or sewage, it has a thirty-year-old roof, it has, you know, doors that don't fully close, and, and other issues, that the, the sale value of it and the land is not great. And that's the fact that it, I believe the land abuts against what is the most likely route for the rail trail. That potentially makes a great spot to eventually have parking for anybody who wants to join or leave the rail trail.
So this one, I don't, this is the assessment or the property card. I don't think it has, oh, I'm looking for like how big...
Right, because it's a praise value.
Yeah, because for land units, it's nine thousand square feet, but I can't do maths, never mind trying to come up with what's nine square feet look like.
Right.
Or nine thousand square feet. You're thinking nine, nine square feet peg. It's only about that big, yeah. I corrected. So yeah, Kristen, maybe we can find out how much land around that building we actually have?
Okay, I will do that. And also, this was ringing a bell. There, the oil tank is leaking there. So Fred actually had reached out on the seventeenth to say, has the board decided if the town will be keeping it and should he go ahead and get the work done? And I said that, you know, you all were discussing it tonight. If the repair is needed, because we must run the oil to keep the pipes from freezing unless we weatherize it. He said that right now he can, he's checking the tank each day to make sure the patch that they did is holding.
Yep.
So wanted to just put that on your radar, too.
Well, see, and that's the problem that you're gonna run into. If we turn that into the proverbial kitchen drawer, AKA storage, then how much do you have to heat it? So whatever is in there...
Right. And that proposal, just so you know, is just shy of five thousand dollars.
To get rid of the tank?
To, to remove, properly dispose of the existing tank and install a new one.
What if we just...
And install a new one. See, if we just remove it, it's cheaper.
Definitely.
All right.
But it's also, again, the, the building needs roof, as if I, I, you know, I think for environmental, we probably have to remove it. We can't, and if we take down the whole building, the tank has to go anyway. And so I, I think it just saves us some future demolition stuff if it goes out. But I don't know if that building, I mean, there's, there's no water pipes that we have to keep warm, because there's no water in the building. And so if the building goes below freezing, I don't think we lose much.
I'm always thinking, I, I, we just had a freeze up once because of something like that, so that's always stuck in my head, but...
All right. So we'll find out about that. I mean, and that kind of leads into the, the old business with the, the sheet, the Excel sheet that I put together, because we always talk about, oh, we need storage. But no one can ever say who needs it and what is it, and is it appropriate to store it? So the Excel sheet that's in the folder, all I did is that I sat down and just came up with questions to go around to the different departments, which their names are all taken from the Town of Berlin website. And I just went down and added them all on different tabs. The questionnaire is the same across the tab for, let's pick on Personnel because Personnel is sitting here. You know, I go visit them and I say, do you need storage? You say yes. And then I ask, well, what are you storing? What is their meaning to the town? Where are they currently being sold? Something that we've got caught before, you know, is B O S aware of these items for insurance? With that, how much space do you need? Who on your committee requires access? What is the frequency of review of these items? Because again, like the kitchen drawer, we just don't want it to build, build up until we can't shut it. So, you know, I wanted us to look at it. I'm happy to do the tour of all these committees and just say, do you need it, yes or no? I think a bunch of them are gonna come up, no, you know? Agriculture, they already have some stuff down at the garden. Cable, they have their stuff here. Cemetery has their space, you know, COA. But I, in order for us to understand, we need storage, we truly need to know what storage is out there.
The only thing I would love to see that is, is the thing legally required to be kept?
Oh. Okay.
Cause there are some records, the law says we have to legally keep. Besides a lot of things we legally have to keep.
There's a lot.
But anything else that's not legally required to keep, we as a select board can say, we don't need that anymore.
Okay.
And yes, someday down the hole, we could, I am just as bad at hoarding some things in the house, because this piece of wood might have a use five years from now. Um, uh, but really, everything we own costs us money. And, and everything we're doing in town is too expensive right now. And the re, the way you start cutting it, this is, we just get rid of things. You know, uh,
And if it has value.
Likely make myself very not popular during the budget process, because my first cut of the budget, I took almost two and a half million dollars out of the budget. I got rid of a lot of things that people probably really liked the town doing. Uh, and I'll be totally fine being outvoted on a lot of those, but that, uh, uh, I, I went after some sacred cows, including some that, I, I can't go after other people's sacred cows, and I go after some of my own, so, uh, uh, looked at some of those as well. But, uh, I want to know what, what are we legally required to keep? We're not legally required to keep a fire truck from the nineteen forties, you know? Uh, it's nice, it might be neat, but we don't need to keep it. It doesn't need to be on our insurance. It doesn't need to be restored with tax dollars.
Alright, so what I did for column D, I added, uh, uh, under what is the, what is the meaning to the town?
Right.
Does this item need to be legally kept?
Yep.
What is the value?
Yep.
So, are you
Yep.
Good for me to start the tour? And then?
Be very helpful.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I don't have the resources to do it.
I think, I think ballpark is fine. I don't want perfection being me of the good, you know? And so we have some boxes. For me, it's more important to know whether that sum is three or seven, you know, um,
Yeah, okay.
Cause I don't want this to be something that someone spends hundreds of hours on.
No, I mean, uh, and honestly, it's, you know, they, wh- whomever I visit may take some time to go back, but at least there's an explanation as to why we're doing the storage tour compared to, here, just fill out this worksheet and give it back to us, and then we're chasing. So.
Just because it has a need, doesn't mean we have to use an existing building. And so, you know, it could be that we have to build our own curatorial storage building for, for town records somewhere. Um, and, and not just because the building exists, we,
Fill it.
We fill it.
Correct.
Now, there might be cases where, you know, to fix the building up for, for storage is not tons, but.
Well, and the thing is too, I mean, you know, let's think about it, the two, uh, bins that are outside that were donated to the town, fire and police are gonna repurpose them for exercises later, once all that stuff's out of there. So, not that it's pretty, but if you need storage, yeah, it might be something to, yeah, to, to stick in it. It is a, a bin. Alright, so.
Paul and Assavet did the first one, right?
Right.
So, and they're, you know, working out really well. So there might be an opportunity to partner with them again.
Yeah.
Correct. But again, we can't suggest steps on going forward, and truly we can define the need. And right now, it's just the war cry of everyone needs storage, but no one will tell me what. Alright, so, uh, I will start my, my storage tour. I'll just plug in, uh, dates and get on people's agendas. And then probably end of February, um, I can come back with at least an update-ish. Okay, cool. Thank you for that. Alright, um, okay. Next item up under new business is the discussion and possible vote on the select board representative for BBRSD negotiating team. Unfortunately, uh, the representative that we have is no longer interested in doing it. Uh, we are two meetings behind one of their guidelines. On the first meeting was no swapsies. So if I was the person and I couldn't make it, I couldn't call Scott and beg him to go, uh, you go, you go, you don't, oh, well. So, we need to put another person on there. So, Mr. Hawkins, do you have availability to attend these meetings? When I don't know where they are, when they are?
Right. I don't.
Okay.
But if you're interested, I, I have no problem supporting you to be that representative.
Yeah, I can go, as long as, and the reason there was a meeting last week, but unfortunately I could not attend, because the interim superintendent insisted that we do a vote of the board. So, and there's a meeting coming up next week, so.
That was laid out, I guess, in the ground rules at the first meeting, not to swap in and out. And with the MTA, they have to be very
Yep.
Specific and careful of how they handle the negotiations.
Alright, so yeah, I'm, I'm fine, as long as I can get the schedule from Al, I can make arrangements with work to skip you out and go to these meetings and then bring back as appropriate, um, to the board. So I need a motion there, Mr. Hawkins.
I would move to have you be our representative on the, uh, school teacher reunion committee.
I will second it. Um, no further discussion is needed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So Kristen, if you could get ahold of Mr. Al, let him know I'm in. And then ask him for the list of items that I have requested from him, that he wouldn't fork over until this vote was, uh, taken.
I'll put you two in touch.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Alright, next up is a consideration of a special event application for the REC committee, sponsored by, sponsored ice skating event utilizing the town pond on February second. Now I know why you're here. Uh, REC is working in conjunction with our awesome Lions Club on this. So I know there's been lots of discussion on this, lots of emails whizzing around. Um, Kristen, you wanna do a brief summary and then I will, uh, chime in on things I know?
Sure.
I just wondered if the, then organize, I might give a summary of the event.
Wanna come on down to the front table, Dion?
Certainly.
Alright.
Certainly.
It also puts them up to get if we have questions there to.
Ah, this is true. Welcome to the Spanish Inquisition. Is this your first time? You're like, yeah, this is gonna be my last too.
No hablo español.
Okay.
Anyway, um, yes, um, the Berlin Lions, uh, in conjunction with the REC committee, uh, wanted to have this ice skating party, see if we could do this. We had done it for many, many years. Um, and then, uh, Mother Nature decided that for about twelve years, there wouldn't be any ice at this time. So, now there's ice. And, uh, so the REC committee is sponsoring this and, uh, the Lions will provide marshmallows and, uh, a, a small steel tub to put some wood in to start a fire, um, and, uh, little wafers and little chocolate bars for smores. And, uh, uh, we'll have a, um, large trash can with a liner. And the Boy Scouts are gonna come and, uh, be in charge of the fire. And so, we're just asking for your permission to go ahead and do this. Um, we've been, like anything else, I, I, I come to this meeting, but the member of the Lions who is in contact with the REC commission, anyway, it's.
A kerfuffle.
Yes.
Okay. Anything that you have to add before I add?
Uh, no, I'm fine.
Okay, what do you got?
Um, so I did check with our insurance to make sure we were covered in doing everything that we need to do. Um, the most important thing is to make sure that ice is checked, um, by a qualified person, and the results are posted, uh, with a sign. So that will help us from a liability perspective, protect the town, which unfortunately is my job as the skunk at the garden party. I get to tell everybody, you know, how to do the annoying things to protect the town. Um, so the depth would need to be posted. Um, it can be done with an auger, take a photo maybe and post the results. Um, so it could be somewhere near the entrance. They were suggesting perhaps on the website, um, depending on how the event was set up. And I believe, I know Dee, you don't have a microphone over there, but was there another piece that we needed to work on besides just the drilling and the posting of the depth of the ice?
Need to make sure that there are signs that they, they're skating at their own risk. And, um, I think on any flyer that goes out, there was certain language that was suggested by the insurance company that should also be used.
Yep, so.
And the advertisement.
Sorry, I'm gonna repeat that, cause she doesn't have a microphone, but there should also be signs, on that sign, skating at your own risk. Um, and the insurance company had suggested some language to go out on the flyers, which we can get over to you. If you guys are sending out flyers or doing anything for that.
Yes, please, uh, email it to me.
Absolutely.
And I, um, on the original, I gave you my email address.
Perfect.
I can repeat that if you need it.
No, not online, no.
Yeah.
I got it. I have the application.
I'm a tech dinosaur. Now, who would be the authorized person to say that the ice is thick enough?
Well, I mean, I looked and it mentioned the head of REC. So I spoke with Felicia and said that Fire is not willing to, uh, first of all, they don't have an auger.
Right.
And second of all, they'd only be able to do it with a chainsaw, which adds oil to the ice, which makes it a lot more fun. Um, so they are not willing to draw the hole, uh, to cut the hole rather in measure. But REC said that, uh, she is aware of people who have done, uh, the drilling before. In fact, she said she was down there last weekend and there were actually little holes that were already in there. So somebody was measuring before they stepped on it. Uh, uh, I did inform her, as Kristen said, that it needs to be measured, it needs to be posted. So I don't know if they can just take a little stake and throw it in the ground and, you know, on this date, you know, uh, it, it was X inches. She asked when it should be drilled. I said the day before, the morning of. Pick one, um, you know, and watch the weather. I think next week it's supposed to stay in the thirties.
Yes.
Uh, but that, and she said, so Kristen, you ha, if you're sending information to Mark, can you also send it to Felicia? Cause she said she would be willing to email blast it out to
Perfect.
All the parents as well. And Fire Mike said that, um, if we asked, he would be willing to put a Fire person down there, just in case something happened and they needed assistance. Not that it's a long ride from the town pond to the, you know, to the station, but.
Alright, I'll take care of the signage.
Perfect. Doesn't have to be fancy. Just, you know, stay, stay those things and we'll get, we'll be good. And I'll send all that over to you.
Okay. Alright, so then, um, weather, weather permitting, Mother Nature permitting. Are we good to go? Can we give this a?
Yeah, I, I would make a move that we, uh, support, uh, the ice skating party that the REC would like to do on February second. With the, uh, conditions, you know, that ice gets measured and posted, um, and that people are aware they're skating at their own risk. Uh, all sounds good to me. I'm bummed I won't be in town to see it, but I'm happy it's happening.
And I will gladly second that. Um, thank you for coming and, and giving us all that information. And thanks to the both of you over there for all the work that you did. Um, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Skate away.
There you go, you got it.
I'm not a skater.
See, you know, we gotta bring back.
I don't even like marshmallows.
We gotta bring back Hartson's Pond. And for those in town who skated down in Hartson's Pond, the rule of skating was the last one, shut the light off, because it was on the tree. There was actually a switch on the tree. And so whoever was the last one on the pond went over and the switch.
Yep.
So, cool, we appreciate you.
Thank you for your time.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you for doing this.
Yep, well, Lori Burton, uh, is a mover and shaker behind this as well, so.
Good.
Good.
Give our thanks to all those involved. It'll be a cool thing.
Thanks to Dee for all the research she did with the insurance company.
Thank you. Yep.
Okay, cool. Alright, well, cold weather to you. There you go. Alright, uh, we are gonna skip over C, uh, it hasn't come in yet. Uh, we are now down to discussion and possible vote to consider, uh, a board, the board delegate its authority to enforce Berlin general bylaw, Article Six, Section Four, to Highway Superintendent Fred Cummings. So Kristen, if you wanna give a brief summary of that?
Sure. Fred's memory is far better than mine. I'm a little envious, actually. Um, I sent an email on, uh, February seventh of twenty-three that the board, the previous evening, February sixth of twenty-three, had designated police officers as the enforcing authority for the bylaw prohibiting the placement of snow on public ways. And that is Berlin general bylaw, Article Six, Section Four. So my recommendation would be to add the Highway Superintendent, not to make him the sole, but to add in addition to the police officers. So that he can enforce, um, there's some repeat offenders that have been verbally warned many, many times. And, uh, he does feel that there, this is the time that he needs to enforce it, because it's becoming a public safety issue.
Yeah, and I spoke with, uh, one of the sergeants in the police department. I think it was like the week of all three, all three of us were like reaching out, you know, you were out, Dee was at a conference, I was just sitting at home. Um, and, you know, police was just like, we don't have the right tickets, so you're gonna have to order ticket books. And you can't just order fifty. You gotta order a boatload. Um, and their concern would be too, if police, you know, were the ones to like hand you a ticket and you handed it back and said, seeing in court, there's now that additional cost for a police officer who handed over the ticket for someone to go. So, if we can have Fred, um, you know, do this as needed, I think that that would take care of everything. And the notice, the no pushing snow in the streets was on, uh, posted on the, uh, Berlin page, uh, November, so it took effect November tenth. Uh, way back when, whatever that date is, twenty twenty, in there. And then, you know, there's the article one about who we can appoint. So if we decide to do this, I would probably suggest that we repost the don't shove the snow and ice in the street after the plow's gone by. Hey, here's the authority by the board. Put it on the town website, put it on Fred's highway website. We can push it to the non-official Berlin pages, maybe the item, maybe the, uh, uh, Powderhouse News, just to get information out there, so people aren't like, what is this? Why am I getting a ticket?
I don't know why we wanna make Highway an enforcement official. I mean, I, if Highway goes out and stops plowing roads to hand somebody a ticket, I'd rather them plowing roads. And if the, a person says screw you and hands it back and take you to court, then Fred and his team is going to court, you still probably have a police officer that needs to go anyway.
Yeah.
I, I would love to not have highway staff be, having to be confrontational with people in town who aren't plowing, are, are endangering, uh, other residents by putting snow in the road. And I, 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 I do get quite frustrated that every time we talk about rules, someone brings up, we don't have the right ticket books. Get the right ticket books. That, that means we can't enforce anything in town because we don't have the right ticket books? Because to me, it feels like the third or fourth thing that we brought up that says, because we don't have the right ticket books, we can't do this. Enforce the laws in the town.
So we've, we've resolved that, um, we actually have, you can do it as a civil, um, disposition. And we just had to create a form for it, which we have. The issue with the ticket books is they're over three thousand dollars. And every time something changes, you have to update the ticket book. And I don't know that we would do the volume here to do that, but we can do it with a, literally like a word form.
Just know the next time we say we can't do it because we don't have a ticket book, I'll get increasingly incensed.
Fair, fair. Um, I mean, the other thing we could do, and we did talk about this, actually, at the department head meeting, because we had a number of public safety folks there, was, you know, put a ticket book article on, um, you know, for town meeting. That, I mean, that is an option too.
Um, uh, we'll do a thing with it. I just, I don't know, I feel about Highway being the enforcer of rules. I think they're the witness to it. I think they should take pictures of it and bring it to the police if we have to go to court saying, this is that. But that, I think it's the police who are, uh, qualified to help make sure that we have citizens who are not endangering the lives of other citizens.
So, do you know offhand when Chief Shatner will be appearing? Is he, is he first up in February the tenth? Me, Mike and Fred, which would be ideal.
Uh, I believe they are.
So, do we maybe kinda sorta want a table until all three of them are here? Or at least two of them are here?
Um, since we previously designated the police, there's still, the police aren't designated until we make a change. So at least it's enforceable. If we're not making changes. So I, I'm fine with that.
Alright. So do you want us, uh, to ask the police to get the list from Fred and, and use this Town of Berlin Notice of Violation Word File? Because I don't know if their tickets would work, cause they have criminal tickets and this is a non-criminal.
They can use, um, oh, uh, I thought this could be, this is the right ticket for them to, to use. The draft that you made up for, and police can use this?
Any, anyone can, um, anyone can, um, give that one. It, it's said in the book, that you can use it for them.
Okay, it's a non-criminal disposition, um, but it still can be issued by, it's under Section twenty-one of chapter forty.
Ticket you use to enforce a bylaw.
Got it.
Okay. So can you, Kristen, get in touch with Mr. Shatner?
Yep.
And ask him to get with Fred to start doing this, and then we'll just have a joint discussion on the tenth?
Yep.
Alright.
You got it.
And then as a bylaw, then the, the fine is set by Town by law.
Yeah, it's a hundred dollars.
Right.
Alright, cool. Alright, so I. Alright, cool. Alright, so I will add that to the agenda of, uh, Fred, Mike and Eric on tickets. Snow tickets. Alright. Next up in the agenda, uh, oh, we already did that one. So I think we're on F.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Oh, discuss possible vote on process for cost of the recertification of the town transfer station. So do we know if Board of Health has funds that are ready to go?
Um, I talked, spoke with Paul McCalk today about this. There's two kind of parallel things that have to happen. There's the transfer station recert and then there's the landfill. Um, bringing that up to compliance. So he has the funds to, for the tie and bond contract that I believe is.
End of February.
Thirty-five hundred or four thousand dollars to do the transfer station. And that's what he's starting with.
Yeah.
And the landfill one, I believe is about the same. They're holding on that at this time. They're doing the transfer station first and then they're going to take up the landfill. He did, however, go before the capital committee at their last meeting to put on their radar that there may, depending on what the outcome of the second one is, which is the landfill. There may be needing to have some additional funding allocated. So that is on their radar. So it's a kind of a bit of a holding pattern right now.
So I know when Paul was here a couple of weeks ago, um, and he had talked about the non-transfer, the, the landfill.
Yep.
He's talking about the landfill on, oh dear God, what is that word?
The former landfill.
Oh, so the former, not the, so the recertification of. The transfer station, which is on Jones Road. You have where we get rid of all the stuff and then you have the land behind it. Is that? Recertification or is it just where you're throwing the stuff is the recertification and the landfill is all the land behind it?
The second, two separate things. So you're certifying the transfer station, cause that's a closed landfill. So you're doing the recert of the transfer station. And then DEP is also, that's just seems to be more of a paperwork issue to get the cert, the recert done. Um, the landfill is a bigger issue because that appears to be something that DEP wasn't enforcing or informing us that we needed to have enforced for an extended period of time. That's the one where they have to do test holes and they're gonna have to do some monitoring wells most likely. That's where the additional funding is going to be needed.
So is that Jones Road or is that the old dump that we never used?
The old dump. Oh, that we never used?
Gates Pond?
No, not Gates. Um, Gates Pond is one that's owned by the town of Holden.
Hudson.
Hold, sorry, Hudson.
Okay.
Thank you. I got my H's mixed up. So that is, my understanding is that's the responsibility of Hudson, not us. This is the one behind the transfer station that we no longer use.
Alright, so not in on that. Okay. Okay. Alright, I wasn't sure, cause I know that he had mentioned Gates Pond before, so I'm thinking, well, if that's Hudson, why are we paying it?
No, no, no. I think he just mentioned it or it came up because it's in Berlin, but it's not our responsibility.
Alright. Okay, yes. Okay. So do we need to do anything, you know, on this? I know that we were potentially talking about maybe moving some money around, but if Board of Health has the money, then do we just say?
I think we wait till they come back.
Right, they have the money for one, not the other. And again, this would be a unanticipated cost for the reason we have a reserve fund.
Correct.
Agreed.
Yes. Cause I think he, yeah, Kristen, you were right. I think he said around three thousand, that there was a thousand dollars for the certification, a thousand dollars for technical support and a thousand dollars for something else that I can't read my writing. So, yeah, and then the other one he did, the other one unfortunately he said was kinda sorta a big unknown until they get in there and start.
Right.
Digging and drilling and.
We don't, we don't know, yeah.
Okay. Alright. So really nothing for us to do on that one, just confirming that Board of Health has that. Sweet. Alright, um, alright, Kristen, you got the big next one. Um.
I do.
FY twenty-six budget.
Alright. So I'm going to start with the expenditures because that is the known entity, if you will, at this point. In that we know what the requests are. They've all been entered into the budget. Um, that was put, uh, I did put an updated one in there, um, earlier today. So just to kind of recap where we're at this year versus last year. Uh, last year, or the, rather, twenty-five versus looking forward to twenty-six. The FY twenty-five budget. As adopted at annual town meeting and amended at the subsequent special town meeting in June. Uh, is seventeen million, one thousand seven hundred and seventy-two dollars. The requests that have come in for the FY twenty-six budget totaled twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and six. Mil, I'm sorry, yes, twenty-one million, eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand, four hundred and sixty-five dollars. That is a four million, eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollar increase. Over our current FY twenty-five budget. And I broke that down just a little bit, um, because when we look at town and school. Um, typically it's about fifty percent of our budget. That is fifty-fifty split between town and school. So I looked at where the increases were largely coming from. The, um, ASABIT has a per pupil assessment. So that is a fixed cost essentially that we pay depending on how many students are going. And they have really ended out of district tuition due to the demand. Um, from the schools that are in district. So given an increase in students, but this is going to level off, they said in FY twenty-seven, we're going to see that leveling off. This is now just picking up those extra spots that were taken previously by the out of district students. That's gonna be a sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and seventy-three dollar increase as a preliminary estimate from ASABIT. The Berlin Boylston Regional School District, as we've discussed, we now have to vote as one line item. That includes capital, debt and operating. Their preliminary budget request is, uh, an increase of four million, four hundred and fifty-seven thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars. As I said, that includes both capital and, um, debt. Of that, about three million is capital. So obviously that's under discussion. Um, about one point five million is operating. Um, and the town increase is about three hundred, it is, excuse me. The town increase is three hundred and forty-two thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars in terms of requested amounts. Now that does not include any supplemental funding requests that have come in. That is the budgets that have come in. On, based on, um, a two percent cost of living as the board, the personnel committee, um, approved and the FinCom approved as well. And trying to do a level funded budget from the previous year. Couple of cost areas I'd like to point out on the town side that are seeing a significant increase. Um, there's some decreases and increases. And if you look at the dollar change column, I put increases in red and I put decreases in green. Um, we're actually able to come down on our legal budget based on what I see as our spending this year. And the fact that we have a number of closed out cases from FY twenty-four, um, largely Highland Ridge. And, um, River Bridge that are both done. And our spending this year is down significantly. So I feel comfortable taking twenty-five thousand dollars off of that budget and lowering that to seventy-five thousand. I've also taken funding out of data systems because we had a number of leases for computers that are now paid off. And we just received an FY twenty-five state earmark for twenty-five thousand dollars to purchase new computers and IT equipment. So I think making, you know, making those purchases outright will help us right now. Um, there are some additional expenses, proportionally it looks like a lot, but in elections, because we are having to pay for the additional costs associated with the voting machines. And the poll pads for their annual warranty and expenses. It says it's a fifty percent increase, but it's only thirty-one hundred dollars, three thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. So not a huge, significant increase there. Public buildings, um, there is about an eleven thousand dollar increase in expenses. There are just ongoing, very difficult to estimate costs associated with all of the buildings as we know and we've been talking about. But fortunately, based on trends, fuel oil, um, has, were able to take down by twenty thousand dollars. So that is helpful there. We also looked at how much we spent on the town report and the Powderhouse News, and we feel comfortable taking three thousand dollars out of that budget. Um, a major increase given the contract that we signed and the impact of the, uh, Quinbill equivalent or funding educational expenses is the police department wages. Um, that is going up. You're actually seeing two years there because we were able to cover that expense in this year, given the fact that we were down so many positions. We, um, it's an increase of a hundred and eighty thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. However, we had set money aside in the HR budget to help offset that. So I am proposing to move forty-five thousand dollars out of the fifty-five thousand, leave ten in for other unanticipated expenses like vacation and et cetera. To help offset that cost. But another driver of that is we've had a number of officers leave. That did not have degrees and newer officers coming in with higher level degrees. And they're, they're unfortunately, not unfortunately, we're glad they have those degrees, but there is a cost associated with that. Um, but we are finally seeing that we are at competitive pay where we need to be from the market study that we did through the contract negotiations. And this is really a one-year reset. You saw it last year with Fire. Fire had about an eighty-five thousand dollar reset on wages for year one of their contract. And if you look down to Fire, we are at a, a much more stable increase this year of three point three percent or twenty thousand, five oh four on the wages. So that is really our major departmental adjustment that we're looking at this year. Um, we also are seeing a small increase in regional dispatch. Um, I am working as the chair of the admin board with Ann Camaro, who's the director. On potentially bringing in some additional towns, which would help offset those increases going forward. And the board just approved creating a steering committee to work with Ann on looking at this future sustainability of the district. Because if we don't bring in additional communities, those costs are going to keep escalating, but they need to make sense logically for us to do. Um, animal control officer, that, uh, as you're aware, the regional agreement did fall through, but it actually ended up saving us a significant amount of money. Initially, we had twenty-two thousand dollars allocated in FY twenty-two. And we're looking at just about fifteen thousand dollars to, um, fund those costs for FY twenty-six. So there's some cost savings there. Um, there's a bit of an increase in snow and ice. Um, no huge surprise there. Um, there's overtime that has to be adjusted because of the salary increases as well as. I believe there's an additional pla- uh, I'm trying to remember if there's additional plow driver that Fred's asking for. I have to check that one. But there is an increase on the full ti- oh, no, I'm sorry. I know what it is. We added in, um. Overtime for the building maintenance operator who has to come in and do the parking lots, because that wasn't previously captured in the budget. So that was an issue that we wanted to make sure we accurately captured. Uh, Nishoba Health and Nursing is going up by about twelve and a half percent. Uh, the total is closer to ten because they did a mid-year adjustment on us this year, um, from seven point five percent to ten. But when you look at the amount that was approved at twenty-five to what they're requesting in twenty-six, there is a significant jump. They said it's due to the fact that healthcare costs are rising and they have to pay more for staffing and it's harder to find staffing. It's a similar story that we hear, um, everywhere. Um, let's see. Library expenses are increasing slightly due to meeting our minimum local contribution. It's offset a little bit by a decrease in wages. Uh, just given new staffing that are there, um, at their base salary rates. We do pick up a little savings in interest on our debt this year of fifty-seven hundred dollars. And then we have the school increases as I mentioned below. The other two big increases, uh, on the town side are gonna be Worcester Regional Retirement. They are looking at an eleven point three percent increase for the town. That's an eighty-two thousand, nine hundred and sixty-six dollar increase that unfortunately. We have to pay. There's no negotiating or wiggle room there. And we are looking at, well, we're hoping that this is going to be okay. We budgeted for a thirteen point five percent increase in healthcare. Um, they actually announced that the pool for Maya is going to be between nine point nine percent and nineteen point nine percent for an increase. With an average around fourteen percent. I did get confirmation that our claims are running low. So that we will likely be on the lower end of that, which is good. Um, but I did of course say, you know, we always have the option of going out to bid for health insurance if that becomes a cost that's far too prohibitive for us to do. So that is a quick overall summary of expenses. Um, the departments really did take a hard look at places that they could cut to offset increases in expenses. And we tried to do it, especially as well on the legal and the IT side where we could. Do you have any questions on expenses right now? Those are just the requests. So, um, I've started looking at recommendations on basic ones, but I just wanna get the expenses out there yet. Uh, already, rather.
No, I'm, I mean, our departments, um, I've been sitting in on just a silent observer at the, at FinCom and everybody's coming well prepared and, you know, hey, we didn't use fifty bucks over here, so we're shifting it. Over there, I'm truly hopeful that, uh, the school committees will come back in February with drastic changes. Uh, but to see a town increase of, we'll round up for PEG math, you know, three hundred and fifty thousand, an ASABIT increase of sixty-eight thousand. And BBRSD of four point five million. I mean, it's huge. I think people saw it when the tax bills came out of, holy crap, what is this?
We're getting a lot of calls.
I absolutely have no doubt, um, that you are, but, um, all we can do is wait, wait and see.
Well, what?
That, I mean, that's huge. I mean, Kristen, a four point, four point five million dollar increase from BBRSD.
I, I'm a little shocked, I'm not gonna lie. Um, I, they, their presentation was, was excellent and well done before the FinCom. And I know the three million in capital, they said, we just wanted to put all the needs out there because we're working on a ten-year capital plan. So there is some change that is certainly going to happen in the three million from capital. But the one point five million in operating is higher than I've seen since I started. And with everything that we've been talking about and the impacts to taxpayers, I had hoped they would be more sensitive, um, to everything that's going on. And, you know, I literally am sitting with department heads, boards and committees and questioning every single line item increase when they break the expenses down. I now have a seven-page running word document where I have an explanation for everything going up or down. And it really is only contractual, non-discretionary fixed costs that are going up that, um, we're allowing for increases on. You know, and, and you'll see, if you, if you go to the first tab, the FY twenty-six summary. Becau- if we were to say adopt that budget as it is, which obviously we're not, um, and there are a lot of assumptions in here. But that puts us, um, that eats up the excess levy that we currently have of one million, two hundred and forty-seven thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars. And actually leaves us with a deficit of two million, nine hundred and eleven dollars, two million, nine hundred and eleven, nine thirty-seven. So we would have to do an override as well as a debt exclusion for the capital. Um, because we don't even have enough if we were to take all of the excess levy that is left. Um, so let me just kinda walk you through the first page, which is your summary of revenue and expenditures. There are numbers in yellow that are estimates at this point. What I did was I took last year's, um, if you actually scroll down to the maximum budget calculations. Took last year's, um, and applied a two and a half percent growth to come up with what our new local property tax estimate would be. Uh, in terms of the total dollar amount. As where growth has really stagnated, um, over the past year and a half especially. The assessor is not comfortable with me going more than two hundred thousand on new growth. That was upwards of five hundred thousand coming in the first, uh, year that I was here. And, um, state aid I have level funded for right now because we just don't have enough information. And local receipts I have level funded from last year. That is the one area that will likely have a little bit of wiggle room. In there in terms of possibly being able to go up. However, when I say possibly being able to go up, I am talking maybe fifty or a hundred thousand dollars. I am not talking millions of. I am not talking millions of dollars. So just to make that very clear. Um, I kept receipts reserved for appropriation the same. That's cemetery receipts and, um, ambulance receipts that we put into the budget and, um, our other revenue sources. What I did for that was I assumed that we give the schools, just as an assumption, the same amount of free cash for capital as we did last year, which was just shy of three hundred thousand dollars. And, um, I looked at, we had to add back in the hundred and sixteen thousand in public safety stabilization that we added back in at the June Town Meeting. So that brings you up on, you know, your public safety stabilization fund. With, I just put a temporary escalator in there of ten percent, so that goes up to about two eighty-eight, four ninety from the public safety stabilization fund, which is going to be really tight between that capital and the upstairs renovation project. Um, and then, of course, our obligations, which are debt, as well as what's known as the backside of the cherry sheet. And I put in for your expenses right now exactly what the requests are at this time, and you'll see how everything shakes out to that deficit of two point nine million dollars down at the bottom.
That's two point nine million overall we're legally allowed to take without an override.
Correct.
But you're still much higher over just the two and a half percent increase.
That is correct. That does not include the one point two that we would have to take in excess levy on top of the two point nine.
And, and I want to echo at you, it is, I, I, I think the departments do a great job of, of, uh, watching out for the bottom line and only requesting when it's necessary. I think we have a lot of, uh, hard-working and dedicated employees in every department out here. Uh, when I talk about that I'm gonna try to grow up here, because I, I think to, to lower the budget, we have to do less. We have to find things we're doing now and not do them anymore. Uh, because I think asking more of our employees to, to do things is, is not fair. I think sort of nickel-ing and diming some things, uh, is not fair. I think we have to look at things we're doing as a town and just decide that we just don't have the funds to do them anymore. Um, and so as I warned you when we started this up, I, I, and for a little, it is like, when we start looking at things, are we legally obligated to do this? Are we doing it just for fun? And there are some things the town does, I think, just for fun, that we just can't afford anymore. And even if the schools cut the request in half, we're still talking about an increase larger than we had last year.
Correct.
Um, and, and so, I, I mean, uh, I, I think we have to start making some unpopular discussions or some tough discussions about things we just stopped doing here in town. Um, uh, and, and some might take us a couple of years to get there as opposed to just, you know, cold turkey cutting something now, but we, we have to start looking at some of those things. Otherwise, we're a town that no one can really afford to live in anymore.
Well, and I, I think that's a really fair point, and I appreciate your, your point as well, Scott, about not putting more on existing employees, because I have to tell you, existing employees are very taxed as it is, especially in those core service offices where, you know, financial, et cetera, where you only have two employees per office. People are already stretched very thin, so it would have to be an elimination of things that we are not legally required to provide.
Yeah, I, I don't think that the message is gonna be very happy. Um, you know, people may or may not be happy with what the Board decides, but unfortunately, options are limited. You can't continue to say, oh, I'm sorry. You know, here's a minimum of a, you know, X amount of increase per year. Oh, I'm sorry. Now I'm gonna reevaluate your house and make it worth twenty bazillion more dollars and then tax you accordingly. Oh, I'm sorry. Um, it just goes back to accountability and responsibility and, hey, if we have to, you don't want to say it, but if we have to make necessary cuts because something is wanted that people are standing behind, it's kind of like, oh, well, pick, pick which hill you choose to die on, you know, because you can't die on all of them.
Right, I mean, that, that, I've had some of those conversations with people who like my taxes or two. I mean, no one likes paying more taxes, you know, I, I, it, you know, doesn't have as much impact as me as it does other people in town, but I, I don't like it too. But that, you, you have people like, send, tell me something you want, think the town is wasting money on, and there's, there's crickets out there at the point, you know. My taxes are too high. I'd love the next S V and I wish the town wouldn't do X. Or I think we're spending too much money on Y. And it might be something we legally have to do, or, but I, I would have to have those conversations. And the people who are calling now, calling after you get your November tax bill, it won't, you know, doesn't change anything, really. Now's the time that FinCom is meeting. Now's the time people should be watching some of it. And now is the time where you could talk to Peg, Chris, and I about things you think the town shouldn't be spending as much money on, um, so that we can take it seriously and try to find a way to make this town sort of still affordable.
And just so you know, the, we had a meeting between the Treasurers Department, assessors, and our office to make sure that our messaging was the same i- in terms of when people are asking why. And really, you know, letting folks know about Town Meeting. You know, you do get it in the mail, but sometimes, you know, it goes with all the other junk that comes. I get it. Um, and making sure that people get involved, you know. But these large increases, I, I mean, it would be inaccurate to say they are on the town side. The large increases are on the school side. We're seeing that statewide. This is not unique to Berlin. But what is a bit challenging here is you have a larger-than-state-average senior population in the town of Berlin, who, if we start to cut the services that they may rely more on to offset the school needs, then it's really disproportionate even further. So, and, and I hear it. I mean, we, we have had, I have to say, the people in this town, for the most part, are very good at controlling their, their rage. Um, I have had some very kind people in my office that, like, you can just see they're seething under the surface, and they just sit there and they go, I am very mad. And I go, thank you for not screaming at me. I really appreciate that. And we're happy to talk to anybody, but people are hurting, people are struggling, and there's an inequity and an imbalance in the budget. And I really, we went through our side as carefully as we did, and, you know, I would ask the school committee and the superintendent to do the same.
Well, and I know that it's a future, it's a, uh, action, uh, bull agenda item coming up on, on tonight, but it's the TA page where you have that budget. That is something that, it obviously is going to be a work in process. Things are going to change. But we have got to get the narratives out there. We, you just can't, like, drop a spread. Like, if you were to drop this spreadsheet and I had no idea what you were talking about, I'd be like, yeah, hey, that's nice. I don't know what this means. Where am I supposed to look? So, you know, we'll get there, but this is all part of that information that you want to go up to the town. So A, it stops the infighting of, yes, you did, no, you didn't, where did you get that? Oh, I heard it.
Right.
Now everyone can just go, point, point, point. Here's your information. Here's your narrative. This is what this means. This is the pro. This is the con. So.
And I am not trying to, to start any kind of town versus school situation. Unfortunately, the challenge is when you look at the numbers that we are really striking an imbalance. And I, I think that's the, some of the tough decisions too that we need to make because, again, conversation going on everywhere. I want to have the facts out there. I think that it's extremely important to educate our kids and to give them what they need. I'm, as I've said many times, a proud public school graduate myself, um, and certainly don't want to deny anyone their needs. But when we are running offices with two staff people and, you know, everything else is just crazy. So I think everyone needs to take a hard look.
All right, so since Scott did the math, Peg will stop doing PEG math.
I just saw you typed in the same numbers you're typing. I just typed in mine. Um, and so, uh, if you do, uh, quick math, so, uh, schools are fifty percent of town. And so seventeen million divided in half is about eight and a half million for town, eight and a half million for schools, which does bear out. Uh, the town is looking for, then on our side of the equation, looking for about a four percent increase, uh, which probably could be trimmed because we do try to take it to, to and a half to three, so we'll probably look at something there. Uh, the school's preliminary budget, again, which specifically has a lot of capital, which, uh, will likely come down, but their preliminary budget was over a fifty percent increase. Five zero, fifty percent increase. And so, again, preliminary budgets, you start, if you take the budget as a whole as it sits right now, it really is about a twenty-five percent increase would be the average tax bill going up. Now, you've already pointed out that there's structural reasons why we can't do that, because it takes a bunch of extra votes and a bunch of extra things that, I agree, but that finding it sort of on both sides, and I, uh, when we start really looking at some of the school stuff, that, that, now that it is clearly one budget, one line item, one thing across, I want to know why Berlin is charged more per pupil than at Boylston. I think if it's one budget and the money goes back and forth, it can go back and forth as the schools whim, that we should pay the same amount and not the several thousand more per student that we were charged the previous, or, uh, every year up to now.
And we have not had that discussion with the current administration, but when we were in discussions over the summer with Desi, I did actually ask that question, and they had no answer as to why the, the per pupil spending would be different.
And then, uh, secondly is that, and, and I, I could be out of date on this. I'm willing to, but I could, but at one point, when it comes to what are you doing as legally obligated and not, that at one point, Tohonto was looking at adding shop classes. And when we have ASABET already existence, I do not think it is a good use of dollars to have two different schools for our students to learn trades. I think trades are incredibly important. I think there's some incredible, well-paying careers you could be in, uh, in trades, but we don't need to pay two different schools to put together good trade-related classes.
It's duplication.
Uh, it's duplication at a time where, where, where it's going. And, and I would expect the schools to look at sort of what's legally obligated and not, and where are ways that you might have to cut out some, some fun stuff somewhere to, to be able to have the, the diversity in school that you, you should have. Uh, but again, we have no say over how the schools spend the money. They ask for a dollar amount. They can spend whatever they want. I, I hope they take the right, uh, find you comes to find a way to, to lower their request substantially.
Yeah, and I think one of the other items, um, and I printed this out of the Community Advocate for Northboro, Southboro, um, on January fifteenth, they had talked about how Northboro, Southboro, uh, regional schools rejected the bids for transportation, uh, because we know that the lowest bid they received would have resulted in a forty-five percent increase to the daily bus rate in twenty twenty-six. Um, and there was one that had, oh, an even, oh, there was another one that was an eighty-one percent increase for that. So, again, um, does the school start having to get creative? Are you gonna have to start charging parents for the ride, you know, for these things?
Some towns charge for buses.
You know, there's something that's coming up that, uh, you know, the school's looking at not enough parking spaces. And what are they gonna do? Well, I hope they put their creative hats on and think about that too, instead of just saying, pave the lawn and here's your portion of the bill, uh, for that. So, um, you know, I'd be very curious as to what they're gonna come back with for bids from the bus companies, because it looks like there's only two of them that are out there actively, um-
There's not a lot of competition.
No.
I also, just when it comes to numbers, I don't know fully the number of students in both schools. I thought it was a little over two hundred at Berlin Memorial, and I thought it was similar at Tohonto.
Uh, usually, I, I was just trying to see if they gave that to us in the preliminary presentation. Let's see.
I thought they did, because that was kind of like one of my questions too, especially where this whole parking thing is coming up. Are they looking twelve years back to say, holy crap, we've got six classes that are coming in that have eight thousand children in each, so, you know, your hundred little parking spaces aren't gonna mean squat.
I'm thinking of ASABET. ASABET does because it's all on a per pupil, so, um, but that would be good information. And I think when we usually get the more final budget from the dis- from BBRSD that we get that.
Their budgets are supposed to be based on the school population as of October first, I thought.
Yes.
Because the allocation between Berlin and Boylston is based on, on October first number, which in theory was a few months ago. I remember a few things from my FinCom days.
Very good.
Um, I don't know. I just Google searched it really quick, and it said that, uh, Tohonto has a student population of five hundred and fifteen, but I don't know about the breakdown between, um, Berlin and Boylston.
It used to be two-thirds, one-third about. But, I mean, we're, we're talking, if you look at the school budget and you do some, some quick math, you're talking probably between twenty and thirty thousand dollars a student. Now, at what point do we just say, if you have a school-age kid in Berlin, we'll give you twenty thousand dollars and you can do what you want for schooling?
Oh, the one thing they did was how much over minimum local contribution.
Yeah, which was more than two to one.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, minimum state, which tells you how horrible that formula is of minimum state contribution, because if we did just that in Berlin, I, I have no idea how you teach the age of what class sizes of a hundred and, and, you know, no bustling, everyone had to walk or something. I don't know. I don't know how you would do it within that, I don't know.
You, you only have a handful of, um, cities and towns that are at minimum local contribution, and unfortunately, they're rather notorious in the news for having, like, massive problems, so.
Yeah, I mean, looking at on, uh, Desi webpage, enrollment by grade twenty, twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five, fifth grade Berlin is thirty, sixty-one is in Boylston.
Right.
So.
Yeah, two to one.
Yeah, um, and then it only has fifty-nine for Tohonto, but it doesn't break it down. And if you go back, you're looking at seventy-three, sixty-eight, seventy-four, so.
Because it also ebbs and flows, and I know that, uh, I have friends actually in Boylston who are worried because, uh, they're, are building several larger apartment buildings in town, which will bring in more kids, which will probably burst the seams. It's sadly a relatively new school, but if, if the allocation is on a per student or even a ratio of students, uh, that's, that will likely, uh, impact Boylston way more than it will be us. But anyway, I, I'm looking forward to seeing how they, how we start getting this under.
Mm-hmm. It's just the first, uh, first go.
Is there anything you need us to vote on tonight, or tonight was just, like, shot across the bow?
Informational tonight.
Okay. All right. Uh, so, I'm gonna skip over H for now, because H is kind of sorta, um, J.
Where did the agenda go?
Um, all right, so we did that. So, the next one up is discussion of, oh, the discussion of the FY twenty-six, uh, budget page on the TA, uh, page that's out there. I wish we had a TV so that people could see it. But if you all go out to the Town of Berlin website, uh, townofberlin.com, and under Government, go to Town Administrator, and under Town Administrator on the left-hand side, it says FY twenty-six Budget Overview.
There's also a button on the main page.
Oh, is there?
Yeah, there's a button just on the, on the, the right-hand side of the main page.
Oh, they did add it. Oh, okay. So either way, we'll get you there, but on that current budget page now is the ASABET PDF, um, Berlin-Boylston, uh, PDF, the Budget Calendar, the Memo, the Committee Meeting Schedule, and the Townwide Capital Requests. And I know that this hasn't gone truly live yet, so I was hoping that we could maybe take a look at it, suggestions, see who we could get to assign things to that are really good with numbers and don't do-ish things. I'm looking at him. He won't even turn his head at me. Uh, I know.
I just, I think people should see the original documents and not mine or anyone's interpretations of them. I mean, I thought the documents of them were, were good documents. They're directly from the sources. You know, it's the PowerPoint that the schools did. It's the, uh, including ASABET. You know, it's our calendars. I, I was just trying to think of, that from what you just presented, uh, I think that first summary page makes something, it's not, we're not at the point where we're debating expenses versus other, but just generally where the government is, where, where, where we're looking at spending money, what the numbers look like. Um, I, 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 I think, you know, if there's a way to get a giant, you know, draft, nothing has been voted on yet, sort of, uh, stamped across it.
Do like a PDF of, of just the requests and, you know.
Yeah, yeah, and, and, and I think you could label this, this is best when requested. Nothing has been recommended. Nothing has been, you know, uh, other stuff. And that, that, that sort of is a document that as we, I, I think it's a document that will make it easy as we do votes and as we do recommendations to just replace with, you know, status as of this date.
So is there anything, Scott, like, on the front page where it has FY twenty-six Budget Overview, Critical Insights, Important Dates? Is there anything there that you would want?
I, I thought that was quite well-written. I didn't realize it wasn't ready for primetime. I was looking for some budget stuff preparing for tonight, and I saw that there, and I clicked it on myself. And, uh, I thought it was a decent summary. Uh, I, uh, I think there's some, some random opinions in there that are actually, well, not random opinions. I, I think there's some assumptions and some language that I agree with, so I think it accurately reflects where we're sitting at right now. It's not so dry that it's just pure numbers and people have to make their own conclusions. This is where the biggest drivers are. This is the, again, I like the fact that it comes from, especially the school budget comes from their source. And I think when they do their next presentation, they do an update, we replace it with that document so that people are seeing things sort of dra- And I think when they do their next presentation, they do an update, we replace it with that document so that people are seeing things sort of directly. There was there, I didn't see if there was a link there that went actually to the school's own, they have a budget page on the school website as well.
Oh, okay.
And I wouldn't mind clicking, they, they have more documentation there. But I, I, I thought it was about the only thing I thought could, could have been added. It's a chance to get closer to it, I think especially as we get to recommended, Select Board, FinCom, this is the recommended budget, this is why we recommend it.
Okay.
Sort of stuff, and I think that's gonna come a month from now, maybe a month and a half from now, mid-March when we get to the end period, period of that.
Yeah.
Cause then we can say, you know, we chose to cut this because of X, we chose not, we chose not to cut this because of X.
Yeah, March fifth, FinCom completes feedback to the departments, March twelfth, they vote, so, a couple months-ish.
I did also notice that on the left-hand pull dropdown is the BBRSD Budget Presentation, but it's not in the Supporting Materials list, so I'll, I'll make sure to get that in there.
On the Supporting Materials list, can you click on those? Cause when I click on them, I get an error. I can open them up on the left-hand side, but I can't open them under the, so maybe it's me?
Nope.
Nope, so I can't be reached.
Getting an error too.
So, if you could make sure that those are good to go, cause that's the last thing we want is, hey, go look at this page or I'm sorry, it doesn't work. And then every week, we can talk, we can put a reminder up there when we talk about your budget, Scott Kristen, we'll put it out there so the people that are here or watching on playback know where to go to look for this information. Maybe if we could ask other Scott, not our Scott, other Scott, uh, to make a comment at FinCom as well, so people are hitting it, and then same thing. Get it out on the pages, get it out in Powderhouse News, wherever we need to post this to make sure that it is out there. So, people are talking facts and not, hey, I was down at the general store and over a cup of coffee, which Sally heard at the dump. You know, she said, Scott said, that he thinks he heard, and we now have fact. Okay.
Okay.
Alright, so whenever you wanted to release it, let me know and I'll, I'll push it to our unofficial pages where I think there's a wee bit more traffic.
Will do.
Okay. Alright, so, next item, um, Scott, I'm gonna lob this one your way. Discussion and discussion.
A special time.
Yeah, discussion, possible vote on potential articles to be submitted by the Select Board to be included on the annual town meeting warrant.
Um, yeah, so I, I was, I would, I have two.
Mm-hmm.
You might have others as well, cause as we know, we're not allowed to talk about these things, um, outside of meetings. The, uh, uh, and it's probably moved along by members of the public that I know have reached out probably to all of the Select Board members. But one, I was, whether or not we want to add a town warrant article to increase the Select Board size from three to five. I, I have some worries about it, just in that there's not exactly been, uh, highly competitive seats races for the three seats we have. But, and sort of are there five people who'd be willing to do this? Although I also go back to thinking that because we now have, I believe strongly, because we have a town administrator, the job is actually doable. And we're not actually day-to-day supervision for, uh, uh, staff members. But I think it would also allow potentially some subcommittees and joint work, like Pecan and I could work to, if there were five, Pecan and I could work together on what's the storage needs of, of the various departments and put something together where it is hard to do something like that now. I also think that, you know, it was three people on the Select Board when the town was nine hundred residents and we're now, the, I tell the number that's headed over four thousand.
Close to four, yes, over four.
Near four thousand residents. But I also think, uh, that even with, with a town administrator, having five adds more stability to, to, uh, your position as well. And I think if we're gonna continue to attract and retain decent, um, town administrators, having the ability, having a, a potentially more stable board as, as, uh, I think is, is good. And so I was thinking we might, I, I think the mechanics of it would be, even if it passed town meeting, we'd still have to have it on the ballot to increase it to five and then.
Well, funny you should ask.
They didn't say it from what to what's on it, they say they expanded. I was hoping to look for numbers when I was reading it, although I tried to grab it online, cause I didn't pick up the paper one.
Yeah, so what I'm pointing to is the Clinton item of.
Most recent one, I think.
Yeah, January seventeenth, Towns, Towns Vote on Expanding Select Boards, Lancaster and Sterling. And for those, you know, waging out thinking, oh my god, this is gonna be in place in May? Uh, the answer is no, because these towns have been added for multiple years to, to do this. I know it's rude reading the paper, um, here, but I'm just trying to get some of the votes, uh, some of the timeframes on this. And it does, um, you know, it talks about how some towns, how they're, they're going to stagger the, um,
Yeah.
The terms, so that, you know, for instance, uh, person who gets the most vote gets the three-year, second gets second, first, the last one gets one, and then by then, everything syncs up.
Yep.
So then you could start to do it and.
That's your biggest variable when it comes to this, is really the terms.
Yeah.
Right.
But yeah, these, these folks have been added for, um, let's see, Sterling has been added since, uh, two thousand twelve. So, if anyone's thinking that this is gonna be a couple months away.
Let me ask you though, did they do a charter as well? I mean, did they do like a full-on?
It, it doesn't say, it said that it was referred to a, a House Committee. So, the nice thing is, and then it, we had to go to the governor, uh, for signature. So, the nice thing is that you have two towns that are close by that you could drive over and ask. And then while toodling around, I found an article, um, from Milton, um, in twenty seventeen, written by a Select Board person who was pushing people in Milton to go from three to five. And, you know, keep in mind, this is what, oops, eight years old. Uh, some of the numbers that he threw out was that fifty-three percent of the two hundred and ninety-eight communities with a town meeting and a board have three board members and forty-seven have, uh, forty-seven percent have five board members. One has seven, god love them, um, but I mean, I'm sure those numbers have come up. So, I mean, there's evidence, obviously, of other towns doing this, it's just not. And maybe, Scott, that it would provide an opportunity for more people to do it where it's not a, you know, oh, these two are banding together, now it's more five people, the work is distributed more evenly, hey, this isn't too bad. You know, so, um, so what would we need to do this, to go forward?
So, I was asked this question by a resident, so I did a little digging. He may know the resident. It actually just requires, it does require special legislation, it's not a bylaw. So, it would require a town meeting vote, so if the boards so choose to, chose to put it on the warrant, then it would go to town meeting for a vote and then special legislation. There is another way to do it, it's a little more complicated, you can have an elected charter committee and that could be why that took them so long to do it, I'm not sure if it was in conjunction with that. Uh, but we already have a town administrator bylaw that pretty clearly outlines the role of the TA and the role of the Select Board. So, I would recommend that, and then I, you know, beg, borrow, steal, it's the antithesis of what you learn in school. I would call up Sterling right now, Lancaster's in between TAs and get a copy of exactly how they wrote it up on their warrant and what they actually wrote up for the special legislation. And, um, see where the variable areas are that we would have some say, um, in, in, you know, choosing terms, like you said, or staggering or whatever. Um, and then we were, would work that out and then we run it through town council as part of the warrant process to make sure everything looks okay, just like we did with any other bylaw, even though it's not a bylaw per se.
Do you wanna vote on it?
Yeah, I would recommend that we, we put this as a, as a warrant article for May town meeting.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
I'll second it. We already had lots of discussion.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, boom, chakalaka. Anything else?
The second one, I'm, I'm not as, well, I partially agree. In trying to do less, looking at some of the other elected decisions out there that I am not sure need to stay elected. And whether or not, one, we can find a way just to get rid of some of them. Or, two, the state law, uh, that I read says that anything that a town is elected can, they can make appointed. That requires, again, town meeting vote, I think it also allows, uh, town election has to support it. But we have, uh, the, the three that I am most interested in are the clerk. Because I think in the long run, just assuming that we will have someone in town who has all the required sort of educational background and certifications to be clerk in, in a town even with the growing population is less. And then, um, I think the constables being the similar one. I think before we had sort of full-time police officers in police department, that might have been one that had a better role. But for the most part, I think the constables defer to the, when we have them elected, to the police. And the third, I, I know the least about, but seems to, is the trustee of trusts, which is another elected positions we have that I think if it's appointed, I have no problem appointing, cause I don't remember the last time they've met. There's nothing online showing any meetings they've ever had, but almost a point, the Select Board is the trustee, is trust and whatever roles that they had, uh, I think we could take on and not overly burden them ourselves. And these are tiny government efficiencies that they happen. Um, but that would be potentially several people election in May that are not pulling papers that need to be tracked and looked at and, and, and other things like that. And so, um, there, there might be others, I don't know if you've looked at all the elected positions, but those are the ones that I, I thought we should look at.
Pages, yeah.
I'll add to that, um, on the constables, so I had appointed constables in my previous community and the easiest way I have found to do it is the sergeants and if there's a lieutenant, were appointed to be the constables. Would, it's, you always have somebody on a shift, you know, that you're able to use. Um, and elected town clerks are genuinely becoming a thing of the past because of the level of expertise and experience that is required. Um, and also the level of coordination that needs to happen between, you know, the town and, or the, the town side, if you will, and the, the clerk side of the shop. Um, and one thing you can do too is you can, there's all different ways to make that position appointed. You can say, you know, not until the current term is ending, election, you know, it, it has nothing to do with any bearing on the current person in the position.
I do, and actually, the, the state law points out that if you do that to someone who's been elected, they get to keep that position until the end of their term is assumed. And in some places, you actually appoint the person when their term is done as well. And so, um, and I don't believe, but clerk is even up in twenty twenty-five.
Next year, a year after, yep, six.
I think that allows us to sort of honor all of that stuff a, as well. For that one, because it takes a town election, a ta, a town election, I would ask it to potentially also be on the ballot. And if it doesn't pass town meeting, then it becomes irrelevant on the ballot, but it, it saves us from having to. For me, it would feel weird to have it at this May town meeting and wait twelve months before it's on the, the ballot. People would have forgotten the town meeting had happened at that point and it, uh, and so I'd love to see if we could try to turn that around.
And I've worked with both elected and appointed town clerks and there are pluses and minuses to each. Elected town clerks will tell you that their autonomy from the Select Board, when you end up with a, what people just refer to as a bad board,
Yep.
Um, is, is, can become an impediment to getting the work done that they need to get done. And, you know, likewise, if you're having problems with regard to personnel or day-to-day work, there's nothing, if it's an elected position, that an appointed town administrator or town manager can do that. Office is basically like the presidency, they're completely autonomous and on their own, so, there's, there's pluses and minuses to each.
And that's the stuff that you need to put out there so that the residents truly understand why we're doing it and it's just not, the Select Board is a succubus looking for more power, you know, to control departments.
Again, I, I go back to, you know, we're, we're not a giant town. The job is, like most government-related jobs, getting more complicated, more technical, more skills needed. And the idea that you will forever have someone in town, and I don't want us to get stuck at a certain point where, uh, Eloise decides that she doesn't want to run anymore, that she's ready to retire and do her things and there is not someone in town to do it and we're just, the position sits vacant for a while, or get someone who has no idea, you know, what it's about. And so, um, I think it's, uh, I think now is, I think it's a good time to, to pull it off.
So, would you recommend for like next steps? Ish?
Are you, do you both wanna take a vote?
Put on, put on the warrant.
I think it'd be a motion to put it on the warrant and, and a request to be added to the ballot.
Second motion?
And I think for all three of them, right?
Yep.
Clerk, Constable, and Trustees of Trusts. I do them in pieces, but I think it just feels just.
Just do it all at once.
Yeah, just, the, the, the reason for all of them is basically some of the same, is some efficiency and, and some making sure that we have the right skills, the right time.
So, is that your motion?
That is my motion.
I will second, whatever your motion was.
And, and Dee will make a great.
Yes, Dee will pretty it up for the rest of us.
So that my motion sounds way more elegant than I just said.
Alright, uh, thank you for that, appreciate it, uh, had lots of discussion, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, okay, let's roll. Alright, last up, under new business, uh, this was a late add. Uh, consideration of a request from Verizon to submit a letter of support to the Massachusetts Broadband Institute, Broadband Equity Access and Deployment Program.
Yes, so we received this today.
Of course, cause it, see, that it was amended at quarter of three this afternoon, so appreciate that.
Yes, and the reason that we added it to the agenda is they are requesting a letter of support from the town before Feb, or by February tenth, and you are not meeting again until the evening of February tenth.
Correct.
So, this is no cost to the town, um, it would be a, a grant if they receive it, Verizon, that is, to bring broadband to underserved areas in town. It actually, they confirmed its FIOs, um, they said today, and, um, they're just looking for a letter of support.
Yeah, cause people who live close to the Hudson border brag that they can get FIOs.
I have it, it's amazing.
I, I, I questioned the long-term viability of FIOs, but I have no problem in, in, uh, supporting broad, added broadband to underserved communities and especially that it's not committing the town to any costs. Uh, I would make a motion, we support it.
I would second that. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alrighty. Sign this, we'll send it back down though.
Yeah, and I, I didn't mean to say that it actually was a requirement if, um, in order for the municipality to be considered for funding.
Yep, yep.
So, thank you.
Alright, uh, we are down to Board Liaisons. Board Liaisons, holy moly, this is an evening of fun. Board questions and liaison updates.
We still have executives to go after.
Yeah, I know.
Tavern, Berlin, what is, the Tavern on West Street.
West.
West Street, West End Tavern is having a ribbon cutting.
Oh, yes, yes, when is that?
Going to that, URSVP, it's a, the, I think it's a Clinton Chamber, the Chamber of Commerce that is doing the
Yep.
Event, and there'll be a ribbon cutting at that time. I'm a RSVP, three, Ted.
It's the second, right?
It is Tuesday, February fourth, from five to seven thirty at the West Street Tavern.
Right, so Tuesday, February fourth, a ribbon cutting for a new restaurant in town that I think I've been to several times already. And probably go several more times, but I'm not, I'm not in town that week, so I can't go to that particular thing.
What time? I have it on one calendar, but not on this one.
Five to seven thirty.
Okay.
The Energy Committee is also meeting that evening, so.
Energy, um.
I, I know. We'll divide and conquer, we'll figure out.
It's always exciting when new businesses open up, especially new locally owned, or even the local franchises and things.
Change it to four thirty.
Ooh, look at you.
Really?
He wields the power, um.
I have a meeting from four to five.
That gets national grid in.
Oh.
They can get out earlier, so we're not keeping them on.
See, so Energy's gonna want to meet at four thirty anyway, so that'll be good.
Are we doing anything? Do we have to do anything? There any like proclamations, nice words that someone needs to like tell me? I'll say nice words to them, I would when it was harriman, so there you go. I have skin in that game from that building.
Should reach out to your legislators also to get a, um.
Proclamation thing? A spiffy, a spiffy thing?
They may also want to attend and bring it.
Okay. Dee? Thank you, appreciate you.
Um, Kristen, I emailed you that the Housing Trust would like a warrant on town meeting, uh, to look back at that. And the Housing. to look back at that. And the Housing Trust, where I think I continue to be the least active of the members, but I I'm trying really. I want to do more. They the had their meeting, the the down payment assistance grant is getting closer to reality. And there'll be more coming out hopefully really soon. That the was currently without staffing as CMRP provides the staff. The person who was there took a job out of state. They're looking at sort of redoing that position and and a little bit, and it's shared between multiple towns. And so there'll be someone at a point. I ended up attending a different, no, sorry, changing subjects. Attending a meeting of the rail trail group here in town as they get further along on the grants that they got from the state. And I think they're getting ready to hold, there'll be a end of February. They're working on the dates. I don't want to say any dates aloud, but there'll be a sort of a public meeting that they're planning and having towards the end of February to go over what the engineering study has found for possible routes and feasibility of things and their recommendations of going forward. I think the, I don't think I'm spilling too many beans by saying aloud. Their recommendations are really to 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 do it sort of in a couple of phases. Hudson's doing theirs in several phases. The reason you ultimately do it in several phases is in some respects, funding is available that usually is a maximum per phase. And so if you do it as one step, you can get sort of one bite at the apple. And if you do it in two or three phases, you can do it in two or three bites of apple. It might be smaller, but the aggregate might sort of be bigger. And so I think that the general is that the the route that's really from the Hudson Town Line to Coburn Road is really generally in the the better shape. People's generally, even with some rough patches, is hiking a little bit now. Hudson is moving forward with their sections. They actually are getting ready to to start going for the final design of their part, which will cut it from actually their original rail trail, right? Because they have their separate rail, but they'll connect their section of the Central Mass Rail Trail. And they'll, Hudson's also taking care of the Boylston part, which is like 50 feet. It's not a.
Bolton.
Bolton, Bolton, sorry. Bolton part, all those pieces, yeah. Yeah, yeah. It's it's a tiny section and.
It's like, yeah, like was it Hogbrook?
Yes, it was small.
Yeah. But they're they're moving forward as well. As you know, Clinton took ownership of some of the land on their part. And so Clinton is moving forward. And even in a statewide thing I did that was talking about how it's moving along, that that like one of the noted Berlin and Hudson and some of the like last remaining sort of chunks of the statewide trail that's not really had a ton of action. So I expect that we'll see some more action. I believe that the select board only approved some of the grant they had.
That is correct.
And so I think what's going to happen is they're going to do this public meeting to get some feedback, do a little bit of tweaking of their proposal, and then come back to us for a presentation and a request to 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 how they want to use the rest of the funding that they they got.
That makes sense.
And so Robin might be reaching out to you just to confirm or maybe even to confirm just what what the various pools are left and what restrictions might or might not be on them.
I've stayed in touch and I've asked a few times when they're ready for a proposal to come before you, you know, for use of the rest of the funds. Speaking of the rail trail, and I meant to mention this under my town administrator report, we actually received a request from a developer who wants a crossing over the rail trail by Hogbrook. Or someone said Hogbrook. Did you say Hogbrook?
I said Hogbrook.
Okay. And I am looking at it because it is obviously land. They, it was a request that came to me, the MBTA and DCR. Now, that is MBTA land leased to DCR, as we've learned through this whole process. But apparently the town has either some type of right-of-way or easement in there. So the town, I'm still trying to like figure this out, but preview of coming attractions. They've reached out with a conceptual plan potentially for 11 duplexes.
Really?
Yes.
Interesting.
And so as soon as I, I'm I'm literally trying to figure out like what the role in the crossing is because they're proposing to put two duplexes on the other side toward 495. And that's also where the water and sewer would be.
It is a real, it's a weird spot.
Yeah, I've notified conservation because obviously there's a brook there and I.
It's wetlands and.
Yeah, because remember years ago when Margaret was here, were you here when there was some like giant company that wanted to come in and put up this ginormous wellness center and meditation? And it was all on that other side of the tracks.
Yeah, I I don't know much yet. I'm trying to figure out what our role is, if any, as the select board should an easement and or right-of-way consent needs to be granted. And this is, it's literally a conceptual plan at this point, just to say, hey, this is what we're trying to do. So you guys can discuss the, how you would go about giving a railroad crossing. And I've not done an abandoned rail trail crossing consent before, so this is this is a new one for me.
Well, I'm sure Concom will have lots to say about that.
They have concerns.
And, you know, who's swimming around back in some pond and what, you know, endangered flower is back there.
Well, we also don't want to make sure the rail trail gets any harder than it already is.
Correct. So I I've notified conservation as well as planning in the building zoning inspector and just kind of having those preliminary conversations to information gather right now.
And then as part of the budget process, I'll do some, but I'd like us to think to to review some of the fees and fines that we have in town that have not been reviewed in a long period of time and whether or not they are appropriate. Some of them might be small enough, we might just do away with them because the cost of just processing it is more than the actual collecting it. And some we might decide to increase, to have some increase in revenue. So I'm planning on trying to figure out where I get a good listing of them, but I feel that's part of, I I'll take care of that piece of it.
I don't think we have them all in one place.
Right.
But you all set, you know,
Right.
inspections.
Right, yeah, yeah. Some we set clearly, some are in the bylaws, some are. I think unfortunately, I think that the like dog license one is actually in the bylaw.
Yeah. That's a state law, but.
The dollar much is a state law?
The bylaw sets forth the fines, I would imagine. I haven't read or I haven't read that one recently, but.
And you couldn't do that anyways because those were set by the elected town clerk.
Right. We can make requests. We can make some requests then potentially, but I think that's enough for me for now.
Can we just real quick go back to Legion Hall? Because I was leading a historical commission meeting when I got grabbed and said, what's going on with Legion Hall? And I said, I don't know. Have you all had a conversation with historical? Because they have some interest in that building.
I don't know if you've had it formal, because as you know, you can't really have a formal conversation with historical until you've pulled Golden Permits, which is the problem we had with every other project we're doing in town is you can't necessarily have preliminary conversations that that have any binding to them. But I thought at one point we did.
I think they were concerned about seeing it on the fall town meeting warrant, even though we passed over it without. I think it might go a long way just to contact the chair and maybe just have an informational thing at a historical commission meeting perhaps. Because I was grabbed and I went, I don't know.
They would try to get to them. They hold their meetings during the middle of the day.
I know. They're like 10:00 in the morning. And it's usually like at the curatorial.
I can also plan to attend the next one.
Yep.
Great.
So do you know what they wanted? Because if if they, here's my, here's my large, yes, here's, well, okay, that's two. Storage. And how are they planning to pay for anything, given the condition of the Bullard House and and the stops and the starts and the stops and the starts? That would be my concern is that now you're going to have two buildings in that.
And to be fair, stops and starts, because we as a town and and other regulations make the projects
Agreed.
more complicated. Then no one historical got involved to learn groundwater flow and stormwater runoff and
Foam insulation.
septic system rules and.
But that would just be, my question is, how do they plan to fund, to take care of it and truly not just turn it into a much larger kitchen drawer that currently exists in the curatorial building and in private residences?
As a, as town buildings on us to make sure the funding is there too.
Yep.
And we really didn't get into it because I said I imagine it will return to town meeting at some point, but at that time I didn't have any information.
I think it's, I mean, that I think it's been a frustrating search to look at all the sort of plots of land we have in town that could be buildable for this and all the various reasons why legally it can't happen. That Legion Hall is definitely a complicated place. But it's a complicated place that doesn't have any legal impediments that make it impossible to do. Some had too many wetlands, some it turns out, despite the fact that they're a buildable lot with no conservation land around it. Somehow, at one point, people with the town put a conservation easement onto them, which means you couldn't build on them, even though that's really the best use of that land, whether it be town, a private developer or affordable housing. And so it is still sort of looking for that. And so it's, that that one by May, fall town meeting looked like it was going to be a lower priority. And as we've ruled out other places, it becomes a place that still has some attractiveness to it.
I would also add that if that happened and if Habitat was the person who responded to the RFP, they were thrilled with the historic envelope and would be interested in absorbing that. And the additionally, I lost my, sorry, I lost my.
We'll repeat it.
Yeah, we'll repeat it because you're not, you're by like, so so that Lisa Wasaki is the chair of the Housing Trust, happens to be in the audience. And so she's pointed out that that one of the the potential developers, Habitat Humanities, is actually excited about the fact that it has a historic charm to it and was going to preserve the envelope and preserve the historic charm as part of the the renovation of it.
And we can add that to the RFP.
Right, we can add that to the RFP that that we put out, because obviously we have an RFP for developers. And I think an RFP to retain the historic charm is is definitely a priority.
I did tell them, now that this is coming back to me more, that it does require town meeting vote and an RFP process, even if it's transferred by town meeting to the Housing Trust and that we could tailor the RFP to the specificities and needs of the trust.
Well, like other buildings in town that may we we may want to go that route where we find that it's too expensive to do anything with and we may want to sell. But we sell under the guise of it's got to be wink and blink and a nod and not whoever has the biggest check gets the building and can do whatever they want with it. So you kind of keep it what it was designed for.
And you can give points, you know, you can say five points for the whatever the highest best use you determine it to be. Four points for this use, three points. I mean, that's why an RFP is so nice, because it's qualitative.
Yep.
Yeah. What I was pointing to for those here and watching, what I was pointing to is that my other favorite newspaper, The Community Advocate, on January 24th this year posted a Hudson Select Board Shows Interest in Mass Rail Trail, Central Rail Trail. So there's discussion for that. All right, I'll keep mine quick. Energy, awesome, awesome committee. Just because he's sitting in the thing and I've blown him off a couple of times for meetings.
Points for pick.
Points for pick. EV, so if I say anything that's wrong?
I'll tell you.
You're going to come up to the table. All right. The EV charger, I know you're starting to relook at possibilities of this. See, all I have to say is that, and I knew that that would draw him up to the front.
You should mention the other thing too while you're up there.
We actually voted on that, that we wanted to learn more about what the possibilities are. Right now, the sense of the board is to go with a hybrid solution that would be public-private to set the stage for the eventual electrification of our municipal fleet in addition to being able with that. So I guess one of the things that we would need from, I guess, you, Kristen, or whomever had the last contact with the vendor would be whether they would be willing to talk to us now about doing this in the front lot of this building. Additional guidance we would need from you guys is where would you like to put something like this? We can make a recommendation to you if you'd like, but ultimately it's your decision because there are factors at play here. We just paved that lot. We don't necessarily want to trench a bunch of conduits through them, tear up the lot. We need to make sure that we're not interfering with snow removal. We need to make sure we're not interfering with any ADA compliance issues. So all of those things. But fundamentally, last time we looked at this, several years ago now, we were looking at the two spots on the side next to the mailboxes because it didn't cross the boundary. It didn't interfere with the ADA and it was close to the transformer for the building. So we would be willing to take that on. We just need a little bit of a nudge to get us there.
How's your eight, how's your report? How's your town report?
My town report is in. And actually, that was one of the things, now that you've you've goaded me on, it'd be nice to get a acknowledgement when we send these forms in, so we know that it was received.
I will. When I go into the email to see them all.
Right on.
And I would like to say that the select board was the first one that was submitted back in November. Woo, woo. So don't chase me. The adder has been, you're not going away yet. The adder has been stopped?
No.
That's my fault. And we, that's the further discussion.
So we voted twice to stop it, but Kristen met with, and I don't want to.
Colonial.
Colonial. And we have additional information that we need to review. I'll let you speak because you were in that meeting. I shouldn't talk.
No, no, please. You're you're 100% correct.
So my understanding of the way that the adder can be used has been extended slightly by DOE, DOE R regulations. The primary use is, should we want to do like an energy manager, which is part and parcel with this discussion that we have going on with two other communities, the portion of that person's salary that is devoted to municipal aggregation could be funded through the adder. That would be a very small fraction because largely that program runs itself. Number two is that there is an opportunity to use those adder funds under the Inflation Reduction Act to actually do generation capacity owned by the town. There is a provision of the act that allows direct payment from actually the federal government to take the place of, like if I were an individual, you get a tax credit because municipalities do not pay taxes. That wasn't a vehicle that was available to them. The IRA changed that and allowed an equivalent payment to be made directly to municipalities. So you have two options that you could enter into a power purchase agreement that would fund a portion of our municipal aggregate or aggregation funding. So basically, you would take a power purchase plan and you would allot that against the, you know, million kilowatt hours that we do a month, and that would provide a certain amount of price stability. Likewise, you can do a similar type of approach if you wanted to do like behind the meter or electrification for municipal buildings. We have relatively limited opportunity for that because we have been aggressive in PPAs. We just did one on the Highway Barn, for example, just recently. We had some historical ones in place. So your primary choices would be this building, which could be something. But we've got the renovation going on on the second floor of the public safety area right now. We don't want to get in the middle of that. That would be the likely place where something like that would go. So that would be future. The other main target that you have would be the school. And then, again, I use tertiary twice in in this meeting. The last place we go is, there was discussion at the the town barn, right, the new town barn. Prior to us putting solar on the rooftop, there was a onings that were proposed, which could provide some shelter to some of those things that you are seeing stored in the old Highway Barn right now. So that could be a third potential processor use for this. Most of the capital that I'm rolling out here would likely blow away what we have in our adder, frankly. It would not be a cheap thing, but it is something to consider because you can also combine those funds with things like DOE, DOE R smart grants, green community grants. Generation didn't used to be part of the portfolio for green communities. Now it is. So that's what's on the table for you. I have, and this is one of the things Kristen and I need to talk about, but there's some risk involved. There's been public statements made by the new administration that the Inflation Reduction Act is kind of in the crosshairs for potential portions being repealed or changed or modified. So that would introduce some risk or insecurity in potentially the payments that we can find ourselves two or three years down the road in a program and all of a sudden some of our funding gets pulled. So we'd have to be careful both for that. But that's that's the reason why it wasn't pulled. Like I said, our board actually voted twice to reaffirm that and we got some new information, so here we are.
Awesome. Hey, thanks for my energy report.
If you would have been there, you would have known that.
Well, and because I wasn't there here.
You need to give me my sucker?
I I always bring. I al- I always bring Tim a lollipop. There you go.
And Tim, you may have said tertiary twice, but you did not say super spreader shiva, so I will give you a pass on that one.
Wow, nope, not even going there. Rec, they're chugging in a move-in. They are looking into potentially removing the pickleball nets and the tennis nets to avoid damage for the winter. They don't know how they were installed, so they don't know if they came, like, the pickleball nets where I play in Boylston, they're in a bag, boop, you just, boop. Um, they don't know, so they're looking into that. Their half-day programs have been going really well. They need a person to join CPA. They were working on their town report. They're still working on the job description, not knowing which way they wanna go, director or admin. They redid their website and, uh, yeah, that's about it. But, yeah, they've got a lot. They're gonna meet with Melissa to talk about, uh, senior programs. They're gonna talk with Hadley, the children's librarian, to make sure that whatever programs Rec comes up with does not conflict with the library, so they can work together on that. And then Concom, they've got some ongoing issues with a resident, uh, waiting on additional information. Da da da, Highland Ridge, everything seems stable. They can't really do anything with the train derailment until spring, and they're working on their standing, standard order of conditions, and also, uh, some other information on the purchase of, um, what was that, Carter Street across from Wheeler's Garage. So that's all I have for that. All right. So, before my battery dies, um, no, I'll just take the one we leave. We are gonna enter into executive session. The board will enter into an executive session under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One-A. Thank you. The board will enter into an executive session under, I just read that, to conduct, uh, strategy sessions and preparations for negotiations with non-union personnel, our town administrator, and we will return to open session only to adjourn. May I have a roll call?
Hawkins, aye.
Stone, aye. All right, peace out.